This video presentation is made possible by Brewster Services Group.
13th, 2020, to order. If everybody will stand, we'll have our prayer pledge. Let's pray. Father God, we thank you for the day that you've given us, Lord. Father, we thank you for all the blessings that you've given us and put upon us. Father, just be with our staff, be with our teachers, our parapros, everybody at the schools. I just ask your protection around our kids and all our employees, Father. Father, I just ask you to push that virus back and keep us healthy, Father. Father, it's crazy times right now, and we're trusting in you to lead and guide us, Father. Father, I just ask you to put out your Holy Spirit upon us to lead and guide us through these meetings, Father. Father, let's do what we need to do for the kids, Father, and our staff. Father, I ask all these things in your name. Amen.
Pledge and lead us to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Moving right down to our board meeting minutes for July 23rd, 2020. Everybody got any questions over those? Is everybody good with those? All right, we'll move on to coach rules. Turned over to our director.
In the past, our coaches have assumed these duties, and I believe our baseball coach wanted to turn that over to Ben Burnett, and Admiral Webster's been doing it, but he's been an employee, and now that he's retired, he's a volunteer. So that's for the field maintenance for the baseball and softball field.
How much was that?
Chad, how much was that?
Field maintenance is $1,550, I think.
So it's not new money, it's just...
No, we've been doing it for as long as I've been here.
Coach Lambert, don't let Ben Burnett smog the yard.
Yeah, Coach Lambert's been doing it in the years past, and Admiral's always done it, but like Mike said, he used to be a coaching employee, so he wasn't considered non-facultary. We just want to put these on because they're going to be... Admiral's already been background checked, but we'll also background check these two.
Any more questions, discussion? Good. We'll move on to 2021 disciplinary hearing authority.
These are the same members as we had last year, minus Mr. Reese will be taking Ms. Amber's spot on the DHA. So I'd recommend we move forward with that.
Is everybody good with this? All right, we'll move on to Richard Lynn agreement.
One correction on this that Kada pointed out to me on the last sentence on the first paragraph, it says that it shall remain in effect for four years from this date and may be extended for an additional four-year term on August 11th, 2020. It should be August 11th, 2024, because that's four years from now. But this is... The board approved this from Mr. Lynn four years ago, so he brought that to us. It's up for renewal again, so that set the board's pleasure. Same agreement that we had with him four years ago.
Any discussion? Is everybody good? All right, move on to budget amendments.
All right, you're finding your packet budget amendments. We only have budget amendments for 141 tonight. And then next month, we should have several budget amendments. We're hoping to have our carryover for federal funds, so we'll try to add those in next month. We haven't got it yet, but our final expenditure reports are being approved as we speak. 141 budget amendments page... I only printed off the pages that were affected, so I will call out the page numbers at the bottom. Page three is... We got a couple pages of revenue. The first page is for pre-K. We received $4,000 extra dollars this year for pre-K allocation. This grant has been approved by the state now with our final budget. And toward the end, we'll show you what we did with our pre-K budget. Next page is page four. We did also receive our final allocation for our special ed grant. We've got this titled VR grant. It's TSW grant, Transition School to Work. It didn't go down this year. However, we're not required to do any kind of match, so we're actually getting more funding this year than we did the previous year, even though the state allocation went down. FRC is the other two amendments there, 6,500 and 4,500. Cindy Purdy received two donations from businesses in the community for student clothing, and she has a weekend feeding program that she takes care of. So that's where the $11,000 will be going. Page six, this is the Transition School to Work grant for special ed. Just updated it based on the final approved budget by the state. And again, it did go down slightly. Page eight is CSH, our final budget for CSH was approved. It's still $160,000, but those are just adjusted based on what Kate submitted and what has been approved by the state. Page 20, this is your FRC donations. We're putting those into supply lines for Cindy to utilize those for families in our community and our students. Page 21, you'll see the expenditures for pre-K based on the updated allocation. And page 22 is just a snapshot of our fund balance and just to show that there's no money coming from fund balance with these amendments. Anyone have any questions about 141 amendments? Thank you.
Thank you, Chad. All right, moving on to the AFT.
And Mr. Brown may help me some with this, but we approved the AFT so late in the year last year that when we were turned loose by county commission, we were able to do some things that we already had established contracts or bids for with vendors. Some things county finance wanted us to bid out. We didn't have time to get those bid out before June 30th and get them started. So I'm asking you to ask me to go back down to county commission and ask for $147,000 back from what we asked for last year that we weren't able to spend to finish out these projects. I know we've got the resurfacing, pavement resurfacing done because we had a contract with that and then rerouting and some other things. But Brian, do you want to... Anything you want to add to that?
No, it's just basically like you said, we have a few items that's left that we couldn't get encumbered before the fiscal year expired, so we just need to try to get those things done as quick as possible. If we can get this money reallocated, then if we can get that done. Technology Center, we've got some things to do there, Loudoun High School, Loudoun Elementary School. So there's two or three items. $147,000 left out of the $800,000 that we had approved.
And then year two, this is the... Do you remember at the board planning session, you looked through years one through five, and then we approved that next meeting? So I'm just asking for you to send me down to county commission. When I go ask for year one remaining, I want to ask for year two, so we have the whole year to spend it and we're not put in the same crunch, or Brian's not put in the same crunch as we were last year and gives us some time to get that accomplished.
I just want to know one thing. Did you get that bathroom fixed for Newman?
That's one of the things that if you don't approve that, it don't get done.
So I'm on the line now. I don't know if I will.
Hey, you know, I was just about to say, and I know it's fly to my stride, but since Brian has taken that position the last few years, our facilities have been taken very well care of. I'm not trying to be nice, but I'm just...
I appreciate it. You better watch it, which is better, dude.
Can we have a little discussion about some of the items on the year two?
Yes.
The resurfaced rubber track and metal bleachers on the football side of Loudoun?
Yes. The bleachers, what we'll have to do with there, and I was talking to Brian. You know, we use that as a placeholder as an estimate, so we'll have to get with the principal and administration there and look and see. Definitely those safety railings around the perimeter need to be replaced. We talked about the metal bleachers or maintenance headache, I believe, as far as painting and doing all that. So looking at what, maybe removing those and going back with the concrete, like what's at Greenback or doing something separate. We're not exactly sure till we get in there and see what our options are. And then the resurfacing of the track. How old does that track now?
Ten years, almost ten years.
Ten years, yes.
And it's actually, I think, recommended to be resurfaced between, anywhere between five and seven.
That's what I was thinking, too.
It's got some worn places on it, and I think Tony Rutherford brought that to our attention a couple of years ago, and we just haven't had the opportunity to get it done.
We got some desperate facility needs a cream back and need to be considered too while we're talking about things like that. I know what's coming up in year three or four, but...
Yeah, I mean, I serve at the pleasure of the board. And this is, I'm just going off the five-year plan you all approved. So I mean, we can, when we do the planning session, my intent, that's why I thought to Brian, was just because we had sent out to the principals before we did the five-year plan to see what they needed and then took what they submitted. So I will do that again since it's been a couple of years, and then they can resubmit their needs and we can rework three, four, and five to meet the needs that you feel like the principals are justified in requesting. So I think that's definitely something we need to revisit every year at the planning session because it is a five-year plan.
Absolutely. Because you still have that additional year that you're adding on at the end, and you have to shuffle things back around.
And we'll have things that have come up that we didn't anticipate two years ago, too, that we may have to move up.
Yeah, I didn't anticipate us talking about year two this week. I know we talked about it in the planning session, so...
Yeah, I'm trying to get ahead of the game.
Trying to get ahead of the game.
Hope that's not too much.
No, we need to start now. So if not, we'll just end up in the same boat we're in.
And to be honest, since there's been so much discussion at county commission on AFT and trying to get us more AFT money, I feel like, you know, we need to show them we're following our plan and we're doing what we said we were going to do and that we need the funds to do those things. But I don't disagree. This doesn't need to be a static document. We need to continually look at that every year.
Any more discussion? All right, we'll move on to athletic guidelines.
TWS, and I put in your packet, TWSAA guidelines. They have put out some things that are required. For instance, we have to do temperature checks of every coach, player, team, visitor. Everybody comes in the stadium. That's not optional. There's some other things in there. Everyone that comes in the stadium has to wear a facial covering. That's not, that's TWSAA requirement that we have to follow. But there are some things in there that are left at the discretion of the district. And that's what we pulled our athletic directors together, and they're here tonight if you have any questions. But one of the things, or the five things you see here are things left to discretion of the district as far as capacity, the stadium, whether or not we can... And they recommend, I think, around a third capacity. Tinkers, is that correct? And then concession stands, they discourage the use of concession stands. We're wanting to use concession stands. They discourage bands playing. We feel like it's appropriate for our band to play at home, not have any bands come visit us, so they're not taking up seating space, and then not have our band travel to where, you know, if we're not going to let bands come to us, then, you know, not let our band travel. So those are the things that we want you to give us some direction on as far as what TWSAA has left up to our discretion as a district. I don't want to be the one to say, hey, there can be fifty people come to the ballgame. I want you guys that are elected to tell me how many people can come to the ballgame.
This looks pretty good right here.
Ronnie, do you have anything you want to add? I know you were asked to.
Yeah, I have a question for you. You know, if you put a limit on it, we've gone out and our limit in the bleachers is we could seat about 3,000. Now, we got a track that goes all the way around it. If you did six feet there, you could have 220 more people there. But I guess my question becomes, when we do put a capacity limit, and I'll be honest, we're talking about one football game for us this year where capacity is an issue. And it's the first one when we play Greenback. What would be the board's recommendation in determining who gets in there and who doesn't? How many tickets a visiting team gets? That becomes a real issue. And one that I, I don't want my ticket takers out there saying, well, you know, it becomes a cherry pick. And like I said, the rest of our games, we play two teams out of Chattanooga. It's not going to be an issue in football other than that first ballgame for us. But I would like to know how you would want us to go about that.
If the board decided to...
If you gave us a one-third or a one... If you set a capacity, how would you want us to go about that? Because when that happens, not only am I or Scott going to get phone calls, you all are going to go get it. And I would want some direction on that from you all.
Yeah, the TWSAA requires masks?
You know what, I'm out. I'd like to also ask Castillo, I'd like to ask some, even anybody else in here that's at the school. What do you guys think? I want to hear what you got. What do you think, Mr. Castillo? I mean, my opinion is wearing the mask, but what do you say?
About wearing the mask?
No, no, no. We don't get a choice on wearing the mask. You got to wear the mask.
I completely agree with Ronnie and his assessment about how, what's the process that you guys would want us to follow if that was so decided? I think the other issue for us is, I mean, for all of us is finances. If we limit the capacity and we pull our first five ballgames or road trips and we shut down in the middle of the season, our financials are broke and to a point where I may not be able to recover at all. And so capacity means dollars, okay? And dollars means funding the program. So you know, so I'm hoping if you do decide to limit capacity, you'll also decide to fund money loss in our programs.
Good point.
Mike, I've got one other thing. On the mask deal, we could sit there and deny somebody entrance that doesn't have a mask. Once they come into the stadium or go up in the bleachers, we're not going to have a mask police. Does that make sense?
You've got to have, we can deny you entrance, but I'm not going to have a teacher or we don't have the personnel that will say, hey, you got to put your mask on or leave when you're...
But we do have to make the announcements periodically to remind everyone.
Announcements, we've made periodically, signs, we've had signs printed. They will be put up. They will be constant announcements about social distancing. We'll see, and I don't know what package you got. Probably then every quarter, we got to go in, lock down restrooms, things like that. We'll do social distancing in concession stands. We'll go very lost a lot of rent. But when it comes down to it, once they get into the stadium, we can mark it off all we can, but it's kind of up to them to be responsible and go by what guidelines are set out. I want everybody to understand that.
The big thing is, I know what, because I trust both you guys, is like Castillo said, and you agree with this, that football funds most of your programs.
Well, I mean, football is the cash cow. Now, most of our programs carry their, I mean, they're self-funded. But football and basketball put into athletics what we have in athletics. We're a little bit, you know, we're a little bit better, got a little bit better situation there. Could we survive a year? Yeah, one maybe, but it wouldn't be good.
I think that we try our very best to make sure we take care of our people. And that's making, you know, if they want to wear the mask, we put our signs up that we don't have any of our people telling them, hey, you can't come in if you don't have a mask, because all that's going to do is cause a controversy and there's going to be issues, so...
Well, technically, by two plus two, we can deny entrance without...
Yeah, I understand that, but I'm just saying, I mean, I don't think, I don't want to put somebody in a position, a teacher that's had to teach eight hours and then come in here on a Friday night and sit there and have to tell somebody, hey, you can't come in here. All they have to say is they put a mask on, you know, if they don't put them on, they don't.
Or you carry one.
Yeah, and so, I mean, it's, I don't think we need them confronting people, is what I'm saying, I guess.
I agree with Scotty. I mean, and I think we ought to, we can figure out a way to do the concession stands where you social distance standing in line. Because I think you sell, we don't sell them in the drinks in a cup anymore. It's all 20 ounces and stuff, right?
Yeah, I mean, it's canned.
Cans, whatever. But I think that's doable. I think the only question would be if you guys as the board, do you want to tell them how you want them as far as people coming in? And how many people do you want in attendance?
Bobby, one other thing. Transportation is going to become an issue, social distancing, okay? At best, we could put one to a seat with a mask on going to an away game. Which, now, for some sports, we're going to have to add a bus, which is going to add tremendous amount of expenses. Now, after we spend, I think it's $10,000, you all give us a reimbursement. But if we have to do this, that's something that, as Mike said, that's one thing we're going to have to have some help on because, you know, you take a bus anywhere and it's a pretty big chunk. One thing we're going to try to do is we're going to offer a bus. And Matthew, correct me if I'm wrong. We're going to offer transportation, but encourage them to maybe go with a parent to limit some of that. We will have to offer transportation, but also hope that some will get there with a parent, whether, and that might help us some.
And that's not typical, but under the circumstances. Usually the team likes to travel together, but, you know, having the parent or them go and then meet there instead of doing the bus, I think is, some parents will prefer that anyway, I believe. So, but if anybody can't get there, then we'll have the bus to get them there.
We're not limiting our students to one per seat in the mornings or in any transportation or evening, whenever. So, I mean, it's not like it's mandatory that we do that. I appreciate the recommendation that you're looking at that, but...
The other schools I've talked to, that's some of the things, other athletic directors I've talked to, some of them not offering transportation at all for like for smaller schools. Football, things like that, certain factors, protocol they're going to follow. One to a seat, the mask is mandatory when they're traveling. I mean, that's, in this case, you call people, you try to get ideas from everybody and see what works best.
I don't know, I'm just sitting here thinking about that transportation. I mean, getting your kids into the school building, we're not doing that. This is an extracurricular activity, and we're going to, we're going to limit them to one per seat. I don't know, it's...
I agree with you on that.
We're not requiring more masks either.
What happens if some of these guidelines from TWSAA don't adhere to them too well? I don't know how you can limit capacity. I really don't.
I think we jeopardize the sport, would we not, Ronnie?
I don't know if somebody jeopardizing the sport is just like anything else. You take measures to limit the contact. I mean, the players are going to be on the playing field. They're not going to be in the bleachers. You know what I'm saying? We can roll balls behind the benches where people can't stand up on the fence and be up on them like that.
But the thing to remember with that is the governor's executive order allows us to play under these TWSAA guidelines, so we didn't, in fact, be violating the governor's order if we didn't follow the guidelines, in my opinion.
But I mean, that... The capacity is a recommendation.
Yeah, yeah, but I'm talking about like the temp checks and the things that are required by TWSAA and the face, the facial coverage and all that.
It's almost as, it's an honor system. I mean, ain't nobody policing it. I mean, no one's really going to...
I promise you, somebody will be taking pictures.
The capacity's big things, I mean, you know, you just allow the first 200 people in Greenback, you're going to have a bunch of mad people.
Ronnie, how many home games? Five home games?
Yeah, five, you got five.
And I'm sitting here thinking about, you know, the bands. If we're going to limit the bands to just playing at home and not being able to travel, then, I mean, I think that's, we're not offering them the same opportunities that we're offering the team.
Some schools, one school at this point has contacted me and saying they're not allowing the opposing band to come because of seat. I've had run phone calls from the school that we play. Some schools are going to do that simply for cause of social distancing and for physical standing.
The board can allow them to travel if they want to. Their team will let them come, but that, these are just recommendations you all can do.
I don't know what's... Speaking for Loudoun, I can't do it right back, but our band director is very fine with that. In fact, she's, I think that makes her feel better that they don't have to load up the bus and, you know...
Yeah, that's fine. I was just thinking about making things, the same opportunity for both.
You know, they work, they work too to give these opportunities.
Now, with that, and the cheerleaders, well, they'll go, okay, because they're not going to be in the stands. They'll be, okay. All right, let me ask the board this. Do you guys feel comfortable just going down through here, one through five? Being, I mean, the big one's going to be the top one, limitation to the stadium. I think you want to have the concession stand, right or wrong?
Okay, I am talking to the concession stand.
Yes, sir.
It goes right along with what we were saying earlier, and they were saying it as well. You know, our band survives off the concession stand. And I don't know how they fund their band, but if we limit the concession stands, then I will limit another program. And so we are definitely showing some favoritism to football over band. And I can tell you, I have band parents and band kids just as excited about football season started as I do parents of football players. And, plus, they look forward to being able to be out on field and show off what they did in the summer and what they're doing after school and things, just like everybody else does. So again, the concession stand is of great importance to us as well to keep our band program up to date.
Thank you, sir. Let me go down to number three, like I say, I think, so we can get this ready for the meeting, to look at doing the concession stands. Three, having our bands play at the home games. Down on here. All right, and then four, just have our bands at the home games and not travel to other stadiums?
I'd like to offer them the opportunity. I'd hate, as a school board member, to say you can't go. You know?
I guess it depends on the other school.
I think, exactly, and I think that's something that if the other school...
Greenback, when we play, their band comes to Loudoun.
I mean, we've made a point for the last two, three, four years, and we've traveled to every game. And it's been a deep point of pride for the band kids to be able to go to the visiting team and play and show them how we're striving to work really hard to get approved. And they've come a long, long way.
How about we leave that up to the principal and band director?
I think that's fair.
But it comes down to the dollars. If you don't, we're short on dollars. That'd be a way to save a little bit of money if we did go to the away games. I mean, I'm willing to concede that.
Let me run into the, you were talking about, we moved to number five. This goes hand in hand with this. Other bands, can bands from other schools attend and play at our home games? Leave that up to the principals.
If we're not limiting capacity, what's it matter if they come or not?
Okay.
What was that, that you're talking about?
I said we're not going to limit capacity. It really shouldn't matter if they come or not.
I want to get this down because we're going to have to vote on this for the meeting.
So you want to separate one, two, three, four, five?
No, no, I wanted to hit every bullet point all the way down to make sure we cover what's on here to be covered and make sure we don't miss anything.
May I ask a clarifying question?
Yes, sir.
So today I heard if our bands are in the bleachers, they've got to be six foot apart seated from one another. Does that mean if an opposing band comes to our school, they've got to be six feet apart? Yeah, and so I'm just going off what I was told this afternoon.
Yeah, and so, I'm just going off what I was told, this afternoon, so I'll make sure we get some questions.
See, here, here's one of the things that's going to come up, and you guys know it's going to happen. This thing's going to change all the way up till we get started, and then it's going to change again, and we're going to have to take it as we go.
I think you're never, you're always going to have the six foot, what he's bringing up, I think if you.
And what, what Mike's referencing, you know, I don't control spectators, but we've got control of our own students that are doing an organized event for us, and we have to follow those guidelines when, when we can, and that's why we've looked at both facilities to see if, and see if there's a place to make sure that we can get the band six feet across. Do you want to address that, Ronnie? I think you've got a plan for Loudoun High School, don't you?
Yeah, we're going to mark off the, the section, well, if you've been to Loudoun High School, our band normally is, we're taking that section all the way down to the front, and then they're going to skip a row, we, we move the student section somewhere else, but we're going to come all the way down that side for our home band. And depending on the size of a band coming to us, we might say, we can handle that or we can't. For example, we play Walter Valley, and they've got 300 members, that's a large, that's a big band, we can't handle that. You know, I mean, in a pet band or something.
See, I, I think Ronnie's got a good point right there, when he, when he talks, when he talks about the band. See, I, I would think that if, if, you know, like Bobby said, this play, this thing's kind of fluid, it's going to change, you know, I, I think as a board member, I would be more willing to say, okay, Greenback, bring your band, because our, our bleachers over there, you could do exactly what we're doing over there with Greenback Band, and, and so, and just have one of those things, we take, take it per game, how, how, you know. When we go to Louden City, I guarantee you, they're not going to let us bring their band up there. Because you don't have enough room up there, anyway.
I would think so.
I dare say that they're probably going to not let everybody.
Sweetwater's another school I've heard of.
Okay, and Sweetwater's another school that we don't have room for the band, I mean.
Well, they were told they're not allowed visiting bands.
Yeah, so I, I, I would think that if we're going to do this, that, you know, first game of the year, we need to put some Loudoun County guidelines on it, and if it's for, if it, if it says, we're not going to let anybody come in, or our bands are not going to travel, but after this first one, I think, I think we all let Greenback, and Cass Stil can tell me if I'm wrong or not, but I, I think we all let Greenback bring their band.
I think we'd love to travel to Loudoun.
Because, I mean, I think that we can still have the social distance.
I mean, we've just got 20, 20 subkids, maybe 30.
And that's something I think you guys are going to have to keep, keep us aware of, Mike's going to have to keep us aware of what, because like, I don't know some of the stadiums, I don't know what, whose band's what, how big the stadiums are, we haven't been, I mean, you, you guys are going to have to make that, I mean, not pass the buck, you have to make the decision or tell us what's the best interest.
Loudoun has the best visitor stand in any of our people we play.
Oh, there's no doubt.
I think, as far as.
Nice and big. All right, moving on from that, let's go up to number one again. Do you want any limitations? TWS double A, they don't have anything right now limiting, do they?
Just recommendations.
The only thing they recommend is wearing a mask. That's it.
I think the way we're talking now, we just need to put stadium, I don't think we can make a decision for gymnasiums right now.
Mr. Tinker.
The temperature's also.
Yeah, all the temperature, yeah.
I don't, I don't disagree with you, Zach, because we're not into, but I think the reason that's in there is for volleyball, which really we don't, because that's a fall sport, girls volleyball, but I don't think we have any capacity issues there either, do we, Ronnie?
Well, I mean, that's our choice, that's.
Yeah, that's what we have to do there.
But we probably do need to revisit that before basketball season, which I think is probably what you're referencing.
Okay, take out gym?
Well, for, for girls volleyball, gym for girls volleyball would be.
Before basketball season, we'll probably have to. Before basketball, okay. All right.
This would be for the falls, falls sports.
Any, any other discussion on this? Got anything else? Hey, thank you, guys, thank you. Don't have any more discussion on that, we'll move on to requests for enrollment, Ms. Amanda Collins, you'd like to come up to the podium?
Bobby, just real close, real quick, I was just going to kind of tell you about Amanda, she, I saw her stories, I've known her for a while, and I thought she would, she needed to come and talk to the board about her situation, it's kind of unique, she is Loudoun County residence and Loudoun City residence, but she's got kind of a unique family.
I thought you might give her a Redskins shirt.
No, I didn't give her that, mine.
I'm actually, I take care of mine, but.
That's what I was thinking.
That's right.
Okay, so we need to take her off the agenda.
Okay, so, as you can see, I already have custody of my, my sisters, this is Ariana, she will be in second grade, this is Olivia, she would have been a freshman in, but she wasn't doing so well in Montana, so she will be repeating back to the eighth grade. My brother and sister-in-law moved to Montana three years ago, she is a nurse, she signed a contract out there, her three-year contract was up in May, which wasn't a big deal, however, and I've also brought proof of this, they are adopting a child, and they cannot legally leave the state of Montana until the adoption is complete, which should be around mid-October, which was still not a big deal at the time, however, the home that they were living in was a rental home, and the property owner decided to sell the house, and with them going to be leaving soon anyway, it was going to be hard for them to find a place to live that was on a month-to-month rental basis. So, my brother and, and sister-in-law and I decided that instead of having the children bounce around, that they have lived with me before, actually, they've lived with me three times. Olivia went, her last grade that she attended, she's attended Loudoun County Schools from kindergarten to fifth grade until she moved to Montana, so she's not, they were born and raised in Tennessee, I've got their birth certificate, shot records, and all that, so I was unaware that I do have a power of attorney, I do not have full custody because their parents are going to be coming here in October, so this is just temporary for me to have the power of attorney for medical and educational purposes. So, I went to the health department, they looked over my, they're actually very strict about their power of attorneys, and they looked over it, and they gave me a new birth certificates, I had their Montana birth, shot records switched over, I went to both schools, filled out paperwork, I didn't have to wait till the following Monday to pick a birth, a birth certificate, and I work four 12s, Monday through Thursday, so I sent Anna, which is the oldest sister, she's 18, she went to the school to drop off the paperwork, and then I was told that I could not enroll the children into school. I have spent right at $3,200 to move these children here, get them bedrooms, bedroom suits, they didn't bring any of their things, so I bought clothing, I bought school supplies, unknowing that you did not accept a power of attorney as a legal document, and I did try to, you know, do some research, and for my point, and, you know, there's a Tennessee state code that's in this power of attorney, and it doesn't say anywhere in here that Loudoun County is excluded from this, accepting a power of attorney. So, at this point, I can, I have no other choice, I did go to the courthouse at the direction of Mr. Tinker, to try to file for emergency custody, I do know Hank Sludge, he came out, talked to me personally, he apologized, and he said, he cannot grant me that, because the children are not in imminent danger. However, I'm going to be in imminent danger, because I have two children that are supposed to be enrolled in school that are not, so I'm going to be legally responsible for not having these children enrolled in school. Or, the only other option I have, or we have, because they have now moved into a one-bedroom apartment in Montana until the middle of October, is to either spend another thousand dollars taking these kids back to Montana to four or five people family in a one-bedroom apartment, or my brother is going to have to quit his job, move here, and leave his wife and the adopted child in Montana. So, I'm asking that you accept my power of attorney and allow me to enroll these children in school, Oriana should have actually started last week, and Olivia would have started on Tuesday.
Any more discussion?
I don't wish we had one quite like this before, have we?
No, I don't think so, not like this.
And I'm not opposed to enrollment, but I can't, I've always been, you know, we're in the direction, if it's not one of the four main reasons for a power of attorney, that falls under other, and, and the board always has to approve the others.
And, and, you know, this power of attorney has come up several times, and in, in the past, I think, this time last year, we had, it seems like we had a couple of folks that were in it, and they wouldn't actually had, they're a different situation, where their kids had been left, and they end up getting a temporary custody order. I mean, I would be for allowing her to enroll, especially if she's saying that, you know, in October, her, her family will be here.
October the 13th is hopefully the finalization, and they will be leaving as soon as that finalization is over. And here's the adoption papers, where they were filed, they have to stay in Montana for 90 days once this was filed, and they are, but the DCS services in, in Great Falls have expedited this case specifically because we were unaware that this was going to happen. I mean, I wouldn't have traveled, I was in 45 minutes outside of South Dakota, I drove 14 and a half hours straight there, picked these children up, drove straight back, went to work, and then spent my Friday gathering all these documents, and going to the school, and then on Monday morning, I was just told no, and I, I mean, I was, like I said, I've spent several thousand dollars, and I already have custody, or I have possession of these children, and Oriana is special, she only has one kidney, she's had 14 surgeries, and she just had a reversal surgery for a colostomy that she did have, so she's been through a lot, and to me, because I do care about them, I love them as my own, that I just, I didn't want them to be bounced around from school to school, also, Montana starts later than Loudoun County, so they start towards the end of September, so if I had to send them back to Montana, they would be in school approximately two, two and a half weeks, and then I'm going to rip them right back out of that school, and bring them right back down here, and enroll them into the school system, because my brother will be moving into my home with this adopted child, with his family.
Loudoun County residents.
I have my property taxes and my life bill.
I agree. I kind of agree with what.
I feel like there should be some kind of special circumstances for just a flat-out no on the power of attorney.
They're Loudoun County residents, right?
They have, well, Olivia attended kindergarten to fifth grade here, and Oriana's just, and she moved and started kindergarten there, so she would be a second grader.
And that's what the board's here for, the special circumstances.
And, and Ms. Collins, well, we started this a long time ago, because we had some issues with, with folks that would, with the power of attorney, that wanted their kids to stay in school, and so they, you know, they lived in Rome County, Monroe County, stuff like that, and, actually, if you wanted to be mad, the county commission made us do this, no, I'm just kidding, but, we had to get rid of some of our.
I absolutely had no idea that, you know, I mean, I mean, especially with the state code attached to it, that legal guardianship gives that power to that person, and for education and physician purposes, and then it doesn't say in there that Loudoun County was excluded from the state code.
So how old have you had the children?
Drove July the 24th, picked them up that weekend, and then I brought them back.
And what was the reason that they didn't stay with their parents? I know that they're adopting, but.
Because the house that they were living in, the homeowners decided to sell their home, so they had a 30-day notice to vacate, so they already were going to be moving in October, and I don't know if you've ever been to Great Falls, Montana, but housing out there is kind of sparse, so to find a month-to-month lease has nearly been impossible for them, they actually are trying, were trying to fight the landlord to let them stay, and unfortunately, his lease agreement didn't hold up to what the, they did, so I didn't, I love every one of these kids, I'm probably going to about to cry, but I would fight for every one of these kids, or I wouldn't be here. They've lived with me four times, Oriana, I almost died, I haven't been in the hospital with her, I would fight for her tooth and nail, so either I'm going to have to send them back to a one-bedroom apartment in Montana with a five-family, or they can just stay here with me and go to school, because they're going to be here, they're going to be in your school system in October, one way or the other, so we can go ahead and start them now, and let them get going where they're supposed to be, or I guess I'm going to be held liable, because I'm not going to have them enrolled in school. And I don't want to break any laws, so everybody was, oh, we'll fly your brother down here. I did pay $740 for a plane ticket for my brother to fly down here, and just stay down here, and then canceled it, and they, they most definitely do not return that money as fast as they take it out of your account, so refunding that plane ticket, so I could speak with you before that, otherwise, he's going to have to quit his job and leave, because the wife and the baby just turned one a month ago, so.
Any more discussion on this? If not, we'll need to add it to the agenda, because it's not on the meeting agenda.
Yes, that's what I was, I'll, I'll talk to my hand, man.
Any more discussion on that? Thank you, Ms. Collins, we'll look to add it to the agenda for the next meeting here.
We're having a meeting after this, and that we'll have to vote on it.
Okay, because if so, then I, I work, I'm a nurse, I work four 12s, Friday is my only day off, my supervising physician passed away two and a half weeks ago, we're shorthanded, I've had three, three people in my office tested positive for COVID, I cannot take any more time off of work, so if possible, I would like to have them enrolled in school tomorrow.
Well, we'll go, we got a meeting right after this, when it's seven, we'll put you at the top of the list there. All right, moving on, any other business deemed necessary by the board or director? Seeing none, it's time to recognize any visitors who wish to address the board about any matter on or not on the agenda. Come to the podium, please, state your name, please.
I don't hate to come up there and breathe on your podium, but not just stand here, everybody can hear me.
Oh, I guarantee we can hear you.
All right.
Go ahead, what's your name, Mel?
Lynn Greer, how are you, John?
Good.
I'm property in the county, I got a kid in Loudoun County School, so really, just some, just some strange questions. At the high school, they pay a $25 fee for their computers, and that's sort of an insurance policy for the first whoopsie. In Philadelphia Elementary, we're charged by the whoopsie. Why is there a difference between what they do at the elementary school and what they do at the high school?
Each individual school has decided what to do there.
Okay, I, I've got to pay the $25 for insurance.
We, we just haven't ever charged a fee before, and we have very few, in the last few years, we've had very few instances of damage, so, overall, if I look at the entire school population overall, it's less burden on our families.
Okay, all right, and, and each school has their own separate policy, so Philadelphia Elementary and Loudoun Elementary might have a different thing too, and I'm just not, because I don't know anybody at Loudoun.
The fees are approved by the board, so the Loudoun High School fee was, so if Marvin didn't submit a fee, it wouldn't be in effect, because it wasn't approved by the board.
All right, not an accusatory question, just a question. I've been given this answer by a couple of people, but I want to hear it from you all, just to make sure we got the right information. Melanie Inwood's still on the books?
Melanie's a part-time employee for us, yes.
What does she do?
She works in special ed, doing the monitoring, and what's the other thing? She took the place of another part-time employee that retired.
Compliance and monitoring.
Compliance and monitoring, yeah.
Well, people told me the wrong thing.
Imagine that.
You can probably on social media, it happens.
Didn't have a thing to do with social media. Do we have our air purifiers and cleaning machines?
No, they're ordered, we have, we got two, and put them, I think Mr. Fiesel tried the two different brands that we were, had availability for, to see which one worked best in the classroom, he gave us his recommendation on which one he liked the best, and we ordered 380 of them. Last, we were told, they were supposed to be shipped tomorrow, so we'll see.
Awesome.
At the mercy of, I've never bought 380 air purifiers in the middle of a pandemic, so.
Absolutely understood.
But they are ordered, yes. But they are ordered, yes.
This is my opinion, right here. So there was a student sent home from Loudoun High School, and the world blew up. Oh, my God, 100 kids have been sent home from Loudoun High School, rah rah rah. People panicked, and people being stupid. Sorry, my opinion. It seems to me that some of that could be alleviated if, and I know, FERPA, and I'll let, if you could just get on there and go, okay, hey, before anybody loses their mind, we had one student go home with COVID, and this many go home from this school. It's under control, everybody's good. Is that a possibility, or no way?
We personally notified every parent of every student that was impacted, and we did a sky alert for every family at Loudoun High School to let them know what was going on. So we notified that school community.
I got that.
We didn't notify, we didn't notify the whole world.
They're not the ones being insane.
And I can't control insanity.
And that's part of the problem, and that's because I was talking to him about, we've talked, is there's no way to control what people put on social media. I mean, I agree with you, he did everything.
There is absolutely a way to control what people put on social media, is you make a statement.
Well, I mean, right here, yeah, we make a statement, but we can't do it.
I don't care what they're saying.
We can't do it every time, because.
But the people in Loudoun, so, okay.
I mean, I mean, I mean, be real. I mean, I mean, I'm not being, I mean, I agree with you. If we could stop it, I would love to stop it, because it's going on there. Go ahead.
I think I can help with that answer. I believe what you're asking is, instead of the more general statement of, we had what we had in, into the ballpark, the exact number. The problem with the exact number is, throughout the day yesterday, it went from eight, and I got a call from, from a different parent that was with that saying.
Right.
Goes to nine.
Right.
Just 10, wound up at 12 somehow.
And you want better things to do than to do it on Facebook?
Yeah, so it'll be, it'll be difficult. You can make one blanket, and then.
We make it, we make it a point to make sure the parents that are impacted are notified, and then all the families in that school are notified, because that's what we owe our obligation to. I don't owe an obligation to everybody out there on social media. I owe, I owe it to the families at Philadelphia, where you have a child. If something happens there, you're going to get a sky alert on it, and you're going to know about it, and you should know about it.
Okay. Okay. So in other words, no. Basically.
We'll notify the families that are impacted, we'll notify the families of the school where it's at.
Okay, all right. How did that go sideways? Do we know?
I have no idea, because.
It went sideways.
It did.
I think it went sideways, because there was an incident at Sweetwater that went sideways, and then we got piggybacked on theirs. Do you want my personal opinion?
I was talking to a mama whose son called her when that incident went sideways in Sweetwater. Some people.
But we want to make sure our families know what's going on in the school that they have kids in, and we are taking care of that.
Okay, so if somebody's talking, they're probably not at that school, because they've not received a notification.
Yes, ma'am.
Works for me. Ms. Parrish, she's still in charge of the vocational tech center, or is she up here doing pre-cutting?
Ms. Parrish is located at the tech center. Pre-cut is one of her assigned duties.
Okay, but she's still in charge of the tech center?
The facility.
Well, she's still the director of what goes down there, like she was last year?
Mr. Tinker runs the CTE programs. TCAD operates out of the tech center, but she, she operates the facility for us.
Okay, so she's in Mr. Hankinson's position still?
Mr. Tinker operates the CTE.
Then why aren't you the head of the disciplinary commission? Because when I had stroke last year, that you put Ms. Parrish in charge of the disciplinary committee, you said it was because she had that position at the location.
She still has the same position. She's located up there, yes.
She took over Hankinson's position last year, told me.
No, well, he's got the CTE part of it.
It was split. She's got part, he's got part.
Yeah.
And he doesn't need another thing on him right now. She's well capable of handling that, and he has plenty of things to do.
You don't want one more thing today? I'm okay right now.
Lynn, that's where the alternative school is.
I know exactly where it is.
And that, of course, that's, that's where.
I'm just saying that Ms. Parrish.
And she's over the alternative school, which ties into the DHA, yes.
Which it used to be, Hankinson had that, but that was split.
Okay.
Whenever Hankinson split.
So now she gets that, he gets that.
Absolutely.
All right, I understand that.
Because I'm still short one person. I can put it all back together if I get one more person.
Tinker. I think Tinker, he's not doing anything with his time, he's just.
What else you got?
Even Bob. Ms. Collins, I'm one of the parents that had a kid dropped off on my doorstep. He was a Philadelphia student when his mother dropped him off two days before Christmas and disappeared. And I didn't come before you all, because I didn't think I had to come before you all. I went to Kevin Gentry and said, hey, guess what? I have eight children now, all of a sudden. He stayed at the school, the teachers busted their bus to try to get him to be able to graduate eighth grade. I had no papers until Children's Protective Services came and threatened to take him away three months later, and I had to go get emergency papers on him, which I did. But it wasn't a problem. The child was in my house, the child was already enrolled in school. It might be a little bit.
There's a difference between initial enrollment and acute withdrawal enrollment.
But his mom was gone, ghosted, and I didn't just say my last, keep my mouth shut, and maybe nobody will notice. I went to school and said, hey, help me. So in my opinion, it's helpless, like, helpless.
And that goes back to what Scotty was saying. The other, in the power of attorney, people were using circumvent residence if you're enrolled. So if the kid was already enrolled, there was no circumventing that, there was no question that that was a.
Right, I understand that, but I don't think she's faking it, I really don't.
What else you got, Ms. Greer?
And we already knew, we had the desprinible in the state, but the state decided to start recognizing it.
Is she looking right?
Give me a couple years, I'll probably look in two seconds. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Greer. Anybody else? Yes, ma'am.
I don't know, I might be. I'm Leslie Veal, and I'm not a Loudoun County resident, um, yet. So I just moved, I'm from East Tennessee originally, grew up in Sweetwater. And I've been living out west for the last 12 years, in Wyoming, and Montana, and Oregon, working for the federal government, doing land management. And I just moved back this summer last month to start my own environmental consulting business here. And my fiance actually, oops, has two children in your school district. Now, we're currently renting in Madisonville, so I understand the predicament. And his children, he has shared custody with the mother, and they go to school in Greenback. And I have two children that I bring to the home. And so right now, we're looking at property, and we're trying to decide where we're going to buy and build, or whatever, but school has started, and we have the COVID situation. And so our big concern, because I'm high-risk, and one of my children is high-risk, is that we're going to have any, some kind of cross-contamination between school districts, because I literally take kids to school in one district and then drive to the other district, like every morning and every afternoon. And so we would like for them to be in the same district, and it's not an option to take the two children from Greenback and put them in the Monroe County school system, because there are siblings in the other home that also go to Greenback. And so the only way to close the loop would be to have them all in the Loudoun County school system. We're not, my children have never been enrolled in Tennessee schools. My youngest was two when I moved away. She was born in Blount County, but she only attended school out west, and she's never been to school here. My youngest was born in Oregon, she's never attended school here. There's no reason for sports angles or anything else. It's literally just a safety issue. And so I did some research on the CDC website, and I looked at what other school districts are doing in situations like this. And basically, what it comes down to is, the recommendation is that every community look at every situation individually, and they come up with their own plan that's safe for everyone. And so I think we're all frustrated with the vagueness of direction that has come from our federal government, from the CDC, from our state government, and our local government. But basically, the power has been put in the hands of each local community to make the decision that's best for that community. And so in my position, the best decision for my household would be to allow my daughters to attend the same school that the children that they house with attend.
I think the big question for the board is going to be, different from Ms. Collins, is are you a taxpayer?
No, I'm not. And so I'm, I'm aware, not yet.
Yeah.
And I'm aware of that, and I spoke with Phil, and I, and Phil's been very crystal clear with me on the past and all the past requests, and what the situations have been. And I fully support all those decisions, and I understand 100% why those would be in place. I do believe that we're in different times, we have different things going on right now than we've ever seen before, and it's an extenuating circumstance. And I think it's one of those things that we have to look at individually, and I think it's one of those things that would have to be addressed on a case-by-case basis. I don't think that it's policy-changing at all. Um, I, in fact, if I were currently a resident of Loudoun County, my support would be in support of the taxpayer, and it would be, you'd need to be a taxpayer. And so, so I, I fully support that, that policy and the board's decisions in the past on all of that. This has never been anything that I've ever done before, or tried to do, or approached. I've never even tried to have my kids moved from one teacher to the other. That's just not my style. My whole thing has kind of been, you deal with the situation you've been dealt, and that prepares you for adulthood. But in this situation, it's health-based, and to me, that means a lot more than any kind of emotional distress, or any kind of angle in sports activities or anything else. To me, it's something that is just about protecting ourselves and you all as well. I mean, because honestly, you know, I, I don't want to talk about what one school district is doing versus another, but the policies are very different, very different. I see it every day. And so your efforts, I want to applaud you for your efforts, because hearing what I've heard here tonight, you know, I know you're taking it seriously, and I see that every day when I go drop these kids off at school, and when I pick them up from school. Um, but there are these little situations and these nuances that have to be brought to light and discussed, and I don't think it would be something that would be permanently decided upon or anything like that, but under a pandemic situation may be considered.
Well, we got, we're going to move into the meeting, and let's, I would, what I'd recommend, if the board tells any different, I think you probably just need to come back when y'all move in. I mean, I don't mean that bad.
Okay.
Because that was different, because in the past, is that not, you've had to be a taxpayer.
Yeah, yeah, I understand.
And I don't mean that bad, and you are looking for, obviously looking to build, or.
Oh, absolutely. Ultimately, we will be there. I mean, there are, my, my children have no attachment to any school district in the state, and, and the two stepchildren do, so we would obviously go there.
And you wouldn't have to come back, like Bron said, if you were a taxpayer, you just enroll.
You let a lot of candy go everywhere.
Sure.
So I, I just wanted to bring it to light, though, it's like I told Phil, I said, it's something that I wouldn't feel comfortable not telling you about, because if something does happen, you know, unfortunately, you would end up quarantining the other children in my household, which, and they're also around those children's friends and other people, and I, I mean, it potentially could be, you know, another Sweetwater situation, which I'm well aware of. I have a friend who works for, um, school health in, in that area, so I just wanted to bring it forward. But, um, yeah, absolutely, I understand if that's your decision.
Yeah, that's what we've followed in the past, really.
Mm-hmm.
We've got to stick to, of course, we've took each case individual every time, so thank you for coming.
Yeah.
Like I say, you, you get you, come taxpayer, you don't have to come here, just enroll, anywhere you want, in the county.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Phil. All right, got it. Any other visitors? All right, seeing none, we'll take just like a five-minute break and go right into our meeting.
This video presentation is made possible by Brewster Services Group.
We've already had our prayer and pledge, so we'll move into approval of the agenda. I would like to add, uh, Ms. Collins, right under, uh, recognizing the visitors, right underneath that, if everybody's good with that, we'll vote.
Yeah, that's what I was going to suggest.
Thank you, sir.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Yeah.
Post. All right, moving on. All right, it's time to recognize any visitors, anybody wants to address any matter that is on the agenda. All right, seeing none, move on. Ms. Amanda Collins, Ms. Newman?
I'd make a motion that we allow her to enroll her nieces into Loudoun County schools.
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Newman, second by Mr. Ridding, any discussion?
Considering that she's a Loudoun County resident and pay a tax, is, I, you know, I think that's the thing to do.
Any more discussion? All right, roll call it, Ms. Kettle.
Mr. Newman?
Yes.
Mr. Jenkins?
No, because I want to score with her.
No, yeah, I will.
Mr. Moffett? Ms. Bridges? Mr. Riddings?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Ebbin?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Cusick?
Yes.
All right, moving on to the consent agenda. I'll make a motion. Got a motion by Mr. Newman.
Second.
Second by Mr. Jenkins, any discussion?
I would just like to say thank you to Mr. Lynn for all the things he does for our school system. All of our principals' kind of tasks, how he supports our kids, and appreciate what he does.
You don't miss a game.
All right, roll call, please.
Mr. Jenkins?
Yes.
Mr. Moffett?
Yes.
Ms. Bridges?
Yes.
Mr. Riddings?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Ebbin?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Cusick?
Yes.
Mr. Newman?
Uh, yes.
All right, passes. Moving on, budget amendments.
Make a motion.
Got a motion by Mr. Newman.
Second.
Second by Mr. Jenkins, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Moffett?
Aye.
Ms. Bridges?
Yes.
Mr. Riddings?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Ebbin?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Cusick?
Yes.
Mr. Newman?
Yes.
Mr. Jenkins?
Yes.
Mr. Moffett?
Yes.
All right, pass. Moving on to athletic guidelines, uh, only thing, I think Mr. Cusick had something maybe to add to.
The only thing I was thinking about, to not protect some of the athletic directors or teachers at the gates. If TWSAA says we need to have masks for everyone, and they don't have one, don't turn
The only thing I was thinking about, to not protect some of the athletic directors with teachers at the gates. If T double S double A says, we need to have masks for everyone, and they don't have one, don't turn them away, but you could have a box of those temporary masks at the gate. You can charge a quarter for extra funding if you need to, just something that, that way it doesn't cause confrontation that'll take away from the students and having a good time. But that's just something to consider so we don't cause a big ruckus about that should not be outside the field, obviously.
Do you want the board to provide the mask?
The board or school, yeah.
So I think you might get into something, charging, I might be wrong.
Charge them to get into it.
Yeah, but-
Charge them for a t-shirt.
I just think, I mean, I don't have a problem with it, I just-
If they're going to come ballgame, they're going to bring their own mask anyway. Have a few there in case somebody's forgotten one.
Okay.
And I bet the Booster Club would love to set up right out there at the gate with the mask they're selling as well.
Yeah.
I think that's a good idea.
Yeah.
I think we need to have some out there because it's, you know, I know we're going to have a perfect plant, we're trying to get a perfect plant here, but we're always going to have that person that does want to cause that issue, that wants to test the waters and show their rear end and, hey, hey, we got your own mask, you go see it. You know, those little, I mean, just like you go to Food City, they have them sitting up there. And if it beats the, I really don't want to put the burden on the schools, but you know, I'm sure, I'm sure between now and then that there'll be some-
We've got some that the Health Department gave us that we could, we could put out there.
Yeah. All right, we want, got a motion, pass.
Motion.
What changes that we add in it, from workshop?
Can we explain the changes?
You might want to just-
All right, no, not going to have any limitations to the stadium as far as capacity goes. We'll have a concession stand. Bands can play at the home games. Should bands travel to other stadiums, of course, that's going to be if the other school allows it, right? And-
The principal's hands, we'll let athletic directors or whoever handle that.
Yeah, I mean, if the other school says they can't, then you can't.
I think the board needs to take that burden off. These guys have got enough things to handle.
No, that's what I'm saying. We're passing this right now.
I'm just saying that as far as, we need to decide tonight if we're going to let them travel, the band.
No, well, yeah, it's in there to travel, but what I'm saying is, you get a school in there that says, hey, we're not allowing you to bring your band to our stadium, and of course, you're not going to take your band.
So you're saying let them travel unless the other school refuses entry to the band?
Yes.
I don't know. I think that the athletic directors, I think, probably sat down with the principals and had a discussion before this was put before us. And it says on there, athletic directors do not want them to travel. I don't know that, but I would guess that Ronnie spoke with Scott, and I don't know who Mr. Castile is, but if they had a discussion prior to-
Well, I could hear them talk at the workshop, I thought. Am I wrong on that? Guys, help me out here, Castile?
I just don't want to-
Big Mac.
You're not going to make your band travel if they don't want to?
Correct.
So if they're allowed to travel and choose not to, that would be up to them.
Okay.
So that's what you want?
That's what we are, well.
Okay.
Okay, that's what I was-
I misunderstood that.
They don't allow us to come, and it's a moot point.
Well, they can travel if they want, if they can.
Absolutely.
Okay.
If the band director wants them to and the principal.
Absolutely.
All right, I think that covers everything.
So we're going to allow other people's fans to play if they come, if they want to?
That's my understanding, that's what, out of the workshop. Yes, sir, Ms. Castile?
I thought as we discussed, that'd be a decision made by an athletic director based on capacity and then to facilitate the band.
That's what I, that's what I thought. Ronnie had referenced like-
So it'd be athletic director?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'd leave it in the principal's hands, yeah.
All right, that in the principal's hands? Good with that? Okay, I covered everything. We got a motion on that?
Motion.
Okay, so on the first part, are we going to put in this motion that we're going to have masks available at the front gate?
We can just do that, Scotty.
Okay, all right.
You don't have to motion that, we can just do it.
Okay, that's all right.
All right, got a motion by Mr. Ridding?
I'm afraid if you motion and vote on it, people just won't bring them, and then we'll run out of masks for the kids.
We got that, right? We got it. All right, we got a second.
Second.
Got a second by Mr. Newman. Did you get that, Ms. Caitlin? Everything? All right, any discussion on this? Good? All right, roll call, please.
Mr. Riddings?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Ebbin?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Cusick?
Yes.
Mr. Newman?
Yes.
Mr. Jenkins?
Yes.
Mr. Moffett?
Yes.
Ms. Bridges?
Yes.
All right, passes. Got the guideline set up. Thank you, guys, for helping out with that. Moving on, Dr. Gary Ebbin retirement.
We have a plaque and a resolution for Dr. Ebbin. Do you want me to read the resolution, or did you want Kenny to do that?
You read it.
Kenny, yeah, Kenny be good.
Well, for me, it's a foul word. Whereas Dr. Gary Ebbin has contributed significantly to the quality of education provided by Loudoun County Schools during his 12 years of service on the Board of Education, serving from September 2008 to August 2020, 2020. And whereas Dr. Ebbin has represented fifth district residents with integrity, dedication, and hard work, exemplified in the fact that he earned the Level Four Board Member Distinction during his years of service. And whereas Dr. Ebbin has provided guidance and leadership to the Board of Education, serving as Vice Chairman of Loudoun County Board of Education, along with Budget, Salary, Policy, Early Retirement Property, and Building Committee positions. Whereas Dr. Ebbin has served for 12 years as Loudoun County School Board Representative on the Board of the Little Tennessee Valley Educational Cooperative. And whereas Dr. Ebbin has been involved in the establishment of two new schools, renovation and construction of additional classroom space for every school in the Loudoun County school system. He contributed to having first-place recognition in the 2014 TSBA Middle School of the Year with Fort Loudoun Middle School, first place the same year in the High School category for Greenback School. And in 2017, Loudoun High School also received first place in the TSBA School of the Year People's Choice Award. Whereas Dr. Ebbin will retire from the Loudoun County Board of Education on August 31st, 2020, leaving a legacy of thoughtful, positive action in support of Loudoun County Schools and the Tennessee Department of Education. Whereas Dr. Ebbin has dedicated his tenure as a board member to providing Loudoun County students with first-class programs and facilities in a physically responsible manner. And now therefore, it be resolved that the Loudoun County Board of Education recognizes Dr. Gary Ebbin and his contribution and service to the students, teachers, and staff of the Loudoun County Schools, and that the Loudoun County Board of Education members express their collective appreciation and admiration for his leadership and for his dedication to service on the board on behalf of the Loudoun County Board of Education this 13th day of August, 2020.
I'd like to make a couple remarks if I could, if you'll pleasure me with that. I attended both of the graduations a couple weeks ago for Greenback and Loudoun High School, and it got me starting to kind of reminisce and then think back over my years on the board. I started attending board meetings about a year before I actually ran, so it was the summer or fall of 2007 that I first began to pay attention closely to what the Loudoun County Board was doing. The class of 2020 that graduated just a couple weeks ago were entering kindergarteners when I started attending board meetings. So that year, as before, I came on the board, they were kindergarteners, and then as I started first grade, I became a board member. So I followed them for the last 13 years, really all the way through school, and so I was able to see one class move all the way through and graduate. Then I got thinking about the things that happened. Some of them are listed in this recognition, and I appreciate that, but a tremendous amount has happened in the last 12, 13 years, if you really think about it. The new schools that we've built, the awards that we have won that were listed here. Then I got thinking about personnel and people. We've had four superintendents. At head lay, starting as I first started coming to board meetings, to our current superintendent. And so I got thinking about the principals in Loudoun County. From when I came on the board in 2012, or 2008, every single principalship and assistant principalship has turned over. It's a totally new staff. Same for the central office. All the central office administrators have turned over from what was there in 2008 when it came. Board members, Scotty, you and Bobby, you're the only two board members that are still on the board now from the time that I joined the board in 2008. So a tremendous amount of change has taken place, and I think all of it for the better. I think the Loudoun County Schools have been an outstanding school district, one I've been very proud to have worked with over these last 12 years, and I think I'll look forward to seeing how you move ahead without me. So thank you very much.
Doc, thank you for your service. I mean, you've been a huge asset, and I don't know how you do everything you do. I'm impressed.
One thing that I think Dr. Ebbin left out is that around the time he was coming on the board, we were in a real struggle and fight for, to build our new schools. And Dr. Ebbin become that catalyst. And if you remember, there was a lot of discussion and a lot of things that we wanted to separate our building program. And Dr. Ebbin was one of the main ones at fault to keep that building program together. And it worked out because we knew that if we separated, that we wouldn't get what we needed and what we wanted. And Dr. Ebbin, I appreciate the job you've done, and I appreciate that you were that catalyst to kind of get it all going when we were building those schools. Thank you.
One last thing. My replacement, Lisa Harvey, she's going to do a good job for you.
Thank you, Doc. Directors report.
School is open. We have kids in the buildings, we have kids virtually. We've ended up with, I think, 771 virtual students. That should hopefully be pretty stable now that school's started. I don't see any more shifting into the virtual program. We're either in school or we're in the virtual. Our enrollment overall in the district, we're down about 40 students from where we were last year, and we have about 40 more students that decided to homeschool this year than last year. So I think that's where the discrepancy there is. I don't think we've actually lost students moving out. I think some decided to go the homeschool route instead of staying with us. That will impact us next year funding-wise significantly. But I feel like our teachers, our staff have done a great job, our principals have done a great job starting off school, started with a staggered start, trying to work out some kinks. You know, whenever you start a school year, it's always a little rough and things aren't going to be perfect. But when you start a school year in a pandemic with totally new operational procedures and guidelines, and guidelines that are changing almost every other day from the state, then they have done a tremendous job, and I appreciate what they have, what they have done and being able to accomplish. Our virtual students, you know, I want our parents to, again, be patient with us. Our teachers are learning the program as the students and parents are learning the program. We're all starting it together at the same time, so we'll work through the, work through